Okay, good evening, folks. We're going to start off the workshop at September 18th, 2023 at this point. First up on the agenda is transportation corridor study updates. Minutet Avenue and Washington Street. Mr. Labonte, you're up.
It's lit. Can you hear me? There we go. Awesome. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I appreciate your time. The memo and the two scope documents should be fairly self-explanatory, but I'll walk through them just high level and happy to field any questions. No action is needed from today's workshop. It's just a chance to keep the council abreast. First with Washington Street. Long been a discussion in the community for both economic development and safety, given some of the high-crash locations that exist on that corridor and some of the conflicts that exist on the northbound side. The comprehensive plan, the transportation chapter, specifically called out pursuing opportunities to convert the southbound side of Washington Street, which has 250 feet of right-of-way, which is the amount of land the state owns for that highway. That's about what the right-of-way or land owned along the interstate would be. So there was intentionally acquired sufficient room to expand that highway at a future date. That date has not come yet. The northbound side, which was the original Washington Street that was constructed early in the 1900s, has a lot of highway-oriented businesses, some residential neighborhoods, really at conflict with high-speed commuter traffic. So the comprehensive plan specifically called out looking to convert the southbound side to that controlled access of turnpike spur and allow the northbound side to become a two-way local street. That would be supported by zoning changes, the efforts of the Conservation Work Group and others to look at some river restoration projects on that eastern side of that neighborhood, really create significant redevelopment opportunities if it weren't trying to be a highway at the same time. So where we are right now, we had secured a vote of support from the Andrus Goggan Transportation Resource Center, which is where the federal highway planning funds are coordinated out of for our region. Main DOT has also expressed their support. So the latest step was with Main DOT, we developed a scope of work that was brought to ATRC, which has, because of some staffing turnover, has surplus funds or unallocated funds during the current year. So we brought forward this study for an allocation of federal highway funds to complete the study, and that was passed unanimously by that group at the end of last month. So we're working with Main DOT to confirm the timing of funding availability and to work on coordinating the RFP to it to start that, what they're calling a pre-feasibility study. So to create something like a turnpike spur, because of the amount of effort and funding that would go into that, there's some key traffic modeling, land use modeling, some environmental review along the corridor that would need to take place. But it's really the first critical step towards ideally picking up momentum and getting to build something to transition that neighborhood. So I can stop there and answer any questions on Washington, or I can go through the Minutet Avenue as well and then field any questions if you have them. If preference, keep going.
Is there any conversation or the scope of what you're working on right now? Does it take into consideration the intersection of Beach Hill and Washington Avenue? That's been a... I'm sorry.
Yes. Yeah, so there, we will be looking at sort of what the long-term landscape of that area from Exit 75. I mean, the scope is really from about Exit 75 or Kitty Hawk Ave, north to just south of the Rotary, where Minutet Avenue and Washington Street come together. The area where DOT has a control of access on either the west or east side of the highway. We have been talking with DOT about East Hardscrabble and Beach Hill and Danville Corner. East Hardscrabble shares some of the site distance and speed and conflict issues for left turns from Washington on to East Hardscrabble or from East Hardscrabble on to Washington North. You've got the added complexity of the bridge abutment of the turnpike, so you easily at peak hours will back traffic up into a passing lane on a 45 or 50 mile an hour highway. I think we all know the danger of traffic attempting Danville Corner across to Beach Hill or trying to navigate those left turns again, in particular during bad weather, winter, dark conditions, peak hour. We are working with DOT on the framework for a near-term closure, and we've been talking about this. If you remember, we had a workshop about doing a demonstration project that became a little more complicated in terms of what it would cost to do a demonstration project, because to actually do a demonstration project to the level you would need to to maintain safety, you can't put those flexible ballers or delineators that you could use. You've driven on Lewiston, in Lewiston by Lewiston Middle School, to try to improve pedestrian safety there. They put up those plastic ballards. Anything that would allow a vehicle to cross that highway was not going to work from a safety perspective, which now meant we were fully designing and engineering a closure system to stop vehicles from making that cross. At that point, we've spent as much money as we would for a permanent closure. So we are working with DOT on a framework to pursue closing those and as part of advancing this study. There'll be more to come once we have a draft state local plan for that. Did that answer your question? Yeah. Yeah, I apologize. When I printed off the information from the council packet, I had copied and pasted the header format and didn't change Washington Street Corridor to Minutet Avenue Corridor, but clearly they're different corridors if you look at the map. We've had conversation and the council did allocate some ARPA funding for small area master plans with the goal of trying to have plans organized where we could go and compete for some of that discretionary federal infrastructure funding. DOT has a program called the Village Partnership Initiative or Planning Partnership Initiative. So they look for communities that are looking to come up with transportation plans that improve equitable access to the transportation system, so multimodal, not just for vehicles, but for people walking, biking, rolling, folks that might have mobility challenges and are using a wheelchair or otherwise, as well as for transit, but also that relate to communities that are looking at redevelopment strategies or investment strategies that change zoning to create walkable environments, which obviously Auburn is aligned to do. So we've been working with DOT on Minutet Avenue as a corridor where we could do that, and obviously the Minutet Avenue from the town line through the Union Street bypass, it functions differently depending on where you are on the corridor, and that will be part of the evaluation. But a couple of key elements, one, certainly the outer section of Minutet Avenue from, say, Garfield Road West is a deadly road. Anyone who's traveled that, while the speed limit's 40, might feel not too comfortable if you're going 40 with surrounding traffic. There's been some really tragic fatalities there. That along with the northern section of Route 4, I think are the most fatal highway sections that we have in our community. So everything from, you know, how can we approach making some changes to that section so we can maintain mobility and greatly improve safety and add some pedestrian access so neighborhoods can access, say, Blackies and what they're doing there. But as you come in town, how do we make the road function to not only allow mobility but function in a neighborhood? And we've had conversations at Fairview Elementary School with staff there, the principal, with crossing guards, and our engineering department, you know, a four-lane highway. We don't really need a four-lane highway through there to maintain what we need to do, but we're also mindful that elements of Minutet Avenue make it less attractive for through traffic when compared to Court Street. So that will also be an element. We've included Court Street in evaluating additional traffic calming opportunities so that neighborhood street can be protected. That could include not only street redesign, but speed limit reductions would be on our list, again, trying to make Minutet Avenue safe and efficient. Obviously, folks live on Minutet Avenue as well, so this isn't just about mobility. And then through the Union Street bypass was important. There are segments in town where I know there are, there have been redevelopment interests in the past that the current road infrastructure just won't accommodate. That could include the Lund Sweet Mill being redeveloped. Now, that environment around that building is really not conducive to the kind of urban mill redevelopment you may see, say, in Lewiston or in Bitterford. And the, at the northern end, the Union Street bypass at Center Street and Turner Street, as I'm sure Eric and others could highlight, has long been a hindrance because it's just, there's no easy fix if you drop in any kind of development, be it hospitality, residential or otherwise. That wouldn't create a significant cost to a developer. So the goal with this study, there'll be significant public involvement. We're going to leverage $100,000, up to $100,000 of those ARPA funds and draw down up to $100,000 in Main DOT funds to advance the planning initiative. There'll be significant public involvement, not only because we want to have public involvement because this, this street and connector roads influence the future of those neighborhoods, but the goal is to work with Main DOT at the other end to go and compete for RACE funds, which is the rebuilding America for sustainability and equity? Rebuilding America's infrastructure for sustainability and equity. I think everyone's just uses, yeah, it's part of the bipartisan infrastructure law. So everyone just calls it RACE funds, and I always forget the acronyms. But you've probably read, you know, Sanford was the first out of the gate partnering with Main DOT, and they were successful securing, I think, $25 or so million. DOT worked with Wyndham over the last year, and for the 302 corridor in Wyndham, has secured a little over $30 million. So when we think about some of the changes we need to make to our infrastructure, you guys know this with your CIP there, you really can't do this with pennies and nickels and dimes. You need to do, you need to bring transformative amounts of money. So the, the goal here is to, you know, build public support through a process, identify solutions, and then work with Main DOT to go out and compete for some of that significant discretionary federal funds. So I'll, I'll leave both of those there and happy to answer questions.
So you have a, we have, we're, we're doing the studies.
That's correct.
Do we have, are they underway?
No, this, we, I wanted to provide this briefing before, in the event there was any feedback, that would influence any final, final scope. So DOT, DOT is ready to proceed with both of these, and I've had conversations with Phil. They're drafting final scopes of work, drafting a state-local agreement. Obviously, the council's already provided some funding that will advance the Minutet Avenue piece, and we found a pathway not to have to use local money, but to use the federal highway money that came locally for the Washington Street piece.
Great.
Are we able to look at the Rotary as part of this study?
It will be.
Great. Thanks.
Yeah. Acts... Yeah, there was some question of whether or not the Washington Street study should include the Rotary, and I think the, the future of that Rotary is more about sort of the placemaking in downtown than it is about sort of the control access highway coming from the interstate. So it probably needs a different treatment.
So Jonathan, are these, to me, the way I read this, it looks like they're two separate plans going out to bid to two, at two separate times, or is there, is the goal to have one company do all of this at the same time so that we can really get a good look at what that, what that end of Washington, beginning of Minutet Ave, intersection Rotary configuration looks like? I guess my, my thinking here is that you could really address that with either a Washington Ave or a Minutet Ave study, and I want to make sure that it gets addressed and in the, I want to make sure that both Washington and Minutet Ave are under consideration when the reconfiguration of whatever that looks like is done, just so that, you know, obviously we want Minutet Avenue to, to work well, but we want it to work in conjunction with whatever Washington looks like. And, and so, you know, I want to make sure that all of those are taken into account when that work is done.
I don't expect we would put them out together because they're sort of out of phase. The Washington Street study will include sort of high-level environmental review and a lot of traffic modeling just to get at, you know, can, can we justify, there's, there's a lot of contention nationally around control access facilities and/or adding capacity to highways that lands projects in litigation for a long time. They've been talking about the Gorham Connector with the main turnpike for 40 years or more. We're not looking at, I mean, this is an existing highway, existing right-of-way that we're trying to put the through capacity where it belongs, but with that traffic modeling, that will be informed by the Minutet Avenue view of, of the Rotary. So those will all, those will all be coordinated, and that's why DOT wanted to make sure the Washington Street study was funded and coordinated out of ATRC because of its importance to regional mobility, but DOT will be at the table obviously for, for both of those. So, and there'll be enough public process to make sure we guide that. It's been my interpretation that our preference once vehicles reach the Rotary is that you're now in-town Auburn and that, you know, high-speed mobility is not a priority as much as safety and options for people to access Edward Little for a sporting event or walk to the high school or walk to work or otherwise, so.
Yeah, I really think that this, this piece of work is one of the cornerstones of the comprehensive plan update that we did a few years back, and, you know, I really think that it, it could set the city up for a lot of success in the future if done right.
Anybody have any? No, we'll move on. Good. Hey, thank you very much. Next steps, because it's already appropriated funds, we don't have to see an order come back, correct? Okay. Mr. Labonte, thank you very much. Okay. Next, we'll entertain a motion to enter into executive session to discuss a real estate matter pursuant to one MRSA 4056C. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Counselor Moore and second from Counselor Walker. All this in favor? And we are now in executive session. For those of you who are tuning in, we're going to have executive session, several of them all the way till 7:00 PM tonight, and then we'll start our normal city council meeting. Thank you.
I'd like to call this meeting for September 18, 2023 to order.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. We have seven consented items on the agenda tonight. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask that we move at number six. I'm sorry, I want to make sure I get the right one. Number six under the, take it off the consent agenda.
Order 127-09182023 is now removed from the consent agenda and moved to new business. Okay, at this point, I'll entertain a motion to accept the six remaining consented items on tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Okay, I got a motion from Counselor, okay, Counselor Staples, Counselor Milks on the second. All those in favor? Okay, pass the seven zero. Next, we have the minutes of the September 5th, 2023 regular city council meeting. Are there any corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the September 5th, 2023 meeting at this time.
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Staples, Counselor Whiting on the second. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, pass the seven zero. Okay, on to communications. We've got council communications. Um, I'm going to start off to the right. I've got a couple of points, but I'll go with the council first. Counselor Gary, anybody from the right to the left here? My right. Counselor Whiting, pause. Any communication? Okay. Um, I've got a couple of things. Bear with me one second. First, um, I just received this today. Um, it's to, it's addressed to me from President Joe Biden at the White House, uh, but I do want to read it off because it's really a testament to everybody here as well. So, uh, it says, Dear Mayor Lebec, thank you for welcoming me to Auburn, to Maine, and for joining me at the manufacturing facility in your beautiful city. I can see why so many generations of the Lebec family have been proud to call Auburn home. I truly believe that if we all come together, leaders at every level, we can strengthen the middle class, grow our economy, and help make America a leader in manufacturing again. We're, we're already seeing it in your community, and that's just the beginning. I'm grateful for your service to our nation and your community. Sincerely, Joe Biden, Joe Biden, President Joe Biden. So that was nice to get today. Um, and we'll have this put up in the hallway here. Second, uh, Thursday, let me just pull it up real quick. On Thursday, myself and Evan Seer, former chair and current member of the planning board, traveled to Boston. Uh, we were nominated, and the city of Auburn and I accepted on the city's behalf, the Municipal Innovation Award from CNU New England, which is a Congress of New Urbanism. A little bit about CNU. New England is dedicated to creating and sustaining and celebrating places that people love. For the 2023 awards, the CNU, CNU New England was seeking projects, initiatives, and partnerships that demonstrated excellence and courage in enabling social diversity, economic equity, and cultural inclusivity. In selecting the 2023 winners, the jury prioritized projects that contributed to creation of creating walkable, sustainable, and equitable, equitable places in New England. Uh, it was my honor to actually be in front of a hundred folks, serve on a panel, and accept this award in your behalf. They specifically called that in their nomination, um, three, four things. One being our application of form-based code that then allowed the next three things to happen. Third's place initiative, or excuse me, third place initiative, so I'll give Counselor Staples, that was his brainchild, credit for that one, as well as our Victory Garden Program and our Corner Store Program. So those three items post-form-based code implementation were called out. The Director of Boston Planning and Permitting were there. I mean, there was planning professionals from throughout New England. One thing they did say, and we did talk about, was the commonality that we all share. Uh, Boston is currently working through the exact same process we've been working through, but they're about two years behind us, and they're doing it in chunks of around, you know, parts of Boston that are on the same size as Auburn, to put in perspective. But Providence, Hartford, Nashua, a lot of other municipalities around New England are, are looking at us, they know about us, and, uh, they're excited to do some of the great programs that we've been able to roll out now. So that's from CNU New England. And that's it for communication on my end. Uh, Mr. Manager?
Uh, nothing. I'm sorry, yeah, two items. Uh, first, let's see on your, in front of your desk, there's the, uh, the shops at Anniversary Park. Encourage people to, uh, look into that. We have some future shopping events down there. For those who don't know, we moved the sheds that were at Festival Plaza to Anniversary Park. Uh, there'll be different types of activities that take place there, as well as a few things that we'll be hosting. Uh, the Thursday, August 21st is the first one. The, uh, wellness theme is what is being focused on there, but we'll also have yoga in the park, as well as, um, our Transportation Systems Director Jonathan Labonte will be doing some, um, free paddles on the river, um, and be using the new kayaks and the, um, that are currently located down at Anniversary Park. If you haven't seen that, it looks like a large vending machine with kayaks inside. Uh, you could go ahead and swipe your card and be able to rent a kayak, put it right in the water and, and go out and access. But, uh, Jonathan will be providing some, um, touring along a little Anderson on that. Uh, the last thing, the Communications Director has requested that I, um, push out that, believe it or not, I know we're in September, but, uh, we are in search of a Christmas tree for Festival Plaza. So, uh, there's a nominating process, it's on the website. Uh, Christmas will be here before you know it, and so, uh, if you know of a great tree, that would be ideal for that area. We are looking, uh, looking forward, uh, to, uh, getting that underway. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you very much. Okay, we're going to keep on moving through. Open this up to the first open session of the night. Members of the public are invited to speak to the council about any issue directly related to city business, which is not on tonight's agenda. So if you could, please step up to the microphone, give us your name and address, and kindly let me hear remarks to about three minutes.
Evening, Mike Adler, 82 Loring Avenue. I'd like to address the issue of this panhandling we have around town here. This has become personal now with my family. It happened the other, this year, um, up here on where the Turner Street and Union Street bypasses. My wife was headed up to go get groceries. She came up to the intersection. As she came up to the intersection at the red light, saw this person walking down with a sign. She rolled the window up, so she didn't have to talk to him. As she's rolling the window up, he runs right up to the window, "You GDFB, you fill in the blanks." I'm getting tired of it, and I've seen it more and more around this city. Now, everybody says they can't do anything about it, but there is piece of paper, this was printed in, printed in the, uh, Sun Journal on Saturday, July 16th, 2022. Editor's note, according to Article 10 of Auburn's quote Code of Ordinances, related to itinerant vendors and peddlers, section 14 dash 316 reads, "It shall be unlawful for any person to solicit on any public street or sidewalk, park, or any other public place, or at any doorway or any entranceway within the corporate limits of the city." I've heard that you guys can't do anything about it. Well, that's the article right there. I'm sick of seeing it. I saw a guy almost get killed the other day on Turner Street. Guy ran the red light from Turner Street, turned and left onto Turner, broadsided the car, hit that car, that car pushed right up over the island. If that person had been standing there, that person would have been killed. Let's do something about this and get rid of this. I'm tired of it.
Okay, um, my name's Wayne Souza, Auburn, Maine. And I'd like to share a couple quotes. I know there's two chances for public comment, so here we go. I'm gonna, uh, go kind of quick, uh, try to keep up. "We, the unwilling, led by the unknowing, are doing the impossible for the ungrateful. We've done so much for so long with so little. We're not qualified to do anything with nothing." I think way too many people feel that way. I think it's kind of humorous, maybe one part, and then two parts, I don't know, pathetic. Uh, "It is better to be innocent, it is better be, it's better to be violent if there's violence in our hearts, and then to put on the cloak of nonviolence to, to cover impotence." That would be Gandhi. Uh, here's a, a few quotes by the very same person. "We point fingers at those in powerful positions, then we claim the role of innocent victims. We are all an equal part of the problem. Only after we admit this to ourselves will things begin to improve." In a world where an eye-for-an-eye mindset is apparently commonplace, there are few of us left with any depth perception, because you need two eyes for that, in case anybody missed that part, uh, for depth perception. True balance can only be achieved through unrestrained imbalance. We may be near the top of the food chain, however, we are no more or less, no more or less important or valid than the smallest, single-celled organism. The hands of the one being pushed belong to the one doing the pushing. And most interestingly, the, my favorite of all, these are all my favorite, uh, "In order for one to truly see, the, the eyes must first be closed." Uh, attribution for all those last five quotes, this guy. Um, there are a lot of good people in this, in this part of the world, yet people are not on the same page. It takes a lot of courage to do that, and we're all kind of, I don't know, I guess we're, we're afraid of dealing with things. It's difficult to get on the same page, and that's all we knew, that's all we need to do. And while change is kind of scary, especially for the political, you know, situation, for people in politics, change is scary, uh, it's going to help everybody if everybody gets on the same page, because people will start small businesses and things will get improved, and things will improve for everybody. Well, that's probably my time for now. I timed this already, so I'm pretty, pretty good chance I'm finished. Thanks for listening. Uh, stay tuned. I'll be back.
Good evening. Chance, uh, I am, uh, both, uh, Lewiston, Auburn, since I'm a homeless, uh, healthcare worker, first footnote. Um, I'm here today to, uh, express my concerns, why not, uh, about, uh, Mr. Lebec, um, Mr. Lebec, he, uh, he has three characteristic, uh, shows three chara, uh, characteristics on a Facebook page of mayor, businessman, and, um, and, uh, Mr. Lebec himself. Uh, I, uh, was expressing my criticisms, uh, about the, uh, Great Falls Bloom Festival, uh, to, uh, Mr. Lebec on his, uh, Facebook page, and he, uh, deliberately blocked me and my criticisms, uh, which I think I'm violating of my First Amendment right. Um, and so I think that a public official shouldn't be able to block, uh, the criticisms of, uh, of a community that so happens to celebrate, uh, democracy. I think that this is a anti-democratic, um, type of, uh, well, more of like ignorance type of, uh, uh, deal, and I think that, um, that it should be held accountable for, uh, Mr. Lebec and also Mr. Chaline in Lewiston, um, for blocking out the, uh, the, uh, voices and criticisms that we have for the city, uh, and for the, uh, public officials. Uh, we see Mr. Biden, we see Mr. Trump, uh, having, um, Facebook pages that, um, that are not private. They don't have a private type of, uh, platform. Uh, this is a public platform, and for me to come in and express my expressions for only three minutes isn't nearly enough. Should be done publicly on a public forum, uh, if given the chance. Thank you.
Is there anyone else on the poll that would like to speak during this first open session? Nope. Okay, I'll close it. Oh, come on.
Bob Hayes, 172 Allen Avenue. At the last council meeting, I presented flaws in the process that has led to many ordinance changes. One of the six flaws was that, um, unposted meeting of three elected officials scheduled and chaired by the mayor. Following the last council meeting, I received some clarifying and enlightening information. Having been better informed, I remain disappointed and questioning. First, it now seems apparent that when the mayor performs an ad hoc work group or committee, that usually the mayor is a member in the chair. Second, two days following the Monday, March 7th, 2022 council meeting, the mayor hastily conceived and membered a work group to discuss potential amendments to the traditional downtown Form-Based Code 4.2. On Wednesday, March 9th, the mayor named, same year, 2022, the mayor named two counselors to the work group, scheduled a meeting for Monday, the 14th of 2022, requested the community room or council chamber be reserved, and said there would be no need to televise or record. Third, it is fact and undisputed that a meeting of three or more elected officials requires the meeting to be public and adequately noticed to the public by state law. Fourth, out of the March 14th, 2022 unlawful or illegal meeting, three elected officials discussed significant land use policy, prepared substantive recommendations regarding amendments to Form-Based Code 2.4.2B without the public present. Fifth, after that meeting, as soon as the failure to notify was discovered, a second meeting should have been scheduled and held with adequate and legally required public notice. In summary, I remain disappointed, feeling strongly that the public has been denied appropriate engagement in a process that is expected and well documented for acceptable form-based planning. The public, as well as city staff, has continually been sidelined from being engaged in an inclusive and detailed form-based planning process. I continue to regret the rush to action that has made a mockery of Auburn's form-based planning process. I fear that such might be recognized, referenced as a, uh, worst-case example of questionable and disruptive process. Thank you.
We don't, Mr. Manager, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I will put some clarifications. I know we don't normally go, uh, back and forth, but I did correspond with Mr. Hayes after the last meeting, um, where I was asked specifically regarding, uh, this, uh, illegal meeting that may or may not have occurred. It wasn't until, uh, Counselor Hayes' second, uh, visit to the podium before I realized he was speaking of this March 14th, 2022 ad hoc meeting on the traditional downtown neighborhood zoning. So I sent Mr. Hayes a, uh, follow-up email on that, advising him of what I just stated. I also stated that I provided for him, uh, an email from Mayor Lebec where he officially informed staff that he was forming the ad hoc work group. He requested the meeting to be made public and named the individuals on March 9th, 2022. Um, I further stated that unfortunately it was a misunderstanding on the part of staff, and the meeting was not posted on our website. The elected members attending the meeting were not advised, the meeting was not posted. Violation of state law requires that the municipality willfully failed to notify the public, which was not the case. Uh, therefore, in our opinion, the meeting is not considered illegal. If a complaint was filed in court and the court found that we willfully failed to notify the public, we would be subject to a $500 fine. This was clarified at the July 18th, 2022 council meeting, but as I stated in my email, I believe Counselor, uh, former Counselor Hayes had left prior to the vote, and the clarification from staff and the reading of the below email from Counselor Staples was, um, shared at the July 18th meeting. So I did provide that further clarification. Um, I wanted to make sure Counselor Hayes failed to mention that the mayor did request that this meeting be made public, uh, so I wanted to make sure I made that clarifying, uh, statement, and this- And this was an oversight on an email that the staff received on posting this on the city's website. Thanks.
Next is ordinance, public comment is not closed. We're going to be moving on. Next is ordinance 11-09052023, approving the text amendment to the Auburn Code of Ordinances, Section 60-548B, front setback principle for traditional downtown neighborhoods, T-4.2B, as shown in the citizen position submitted on June 12, 2023. This is a second reading. Do I have a motion?
Sum up.
Second.
Counselor Staples, second for Counselor Hawes. Open this up to the public for comment. Any members of the public that would like to speak about this topic? None being, I'll bring it back to the council. Counsel, just to remind you, this actually was no or failed. The first reading of vote is zero to seven. Counsel, excuse me, staff and legal has clarified the language in a clarification ordinance that will appear later on in tonight's agenda. Is there any debate? None being, I'm going to ask for a vote. Roll call vote. Sue?
Counselor Gary?
No.
Counselor Whiting?
No.
Counselor Hawes?
No.
Counselor Milks?
No.
Counselor Moran?
No.
Counselor Walker?
I'm going to abstain there because I was reached by the developer there or the contractor because my stepdaughter bought the land that we're arguing about.
Point of contention, Counsel, or point of order. I believe this is a different order for a different case.
Oh, sorry. All right. No.
Counselor Staples?
No.
The order fails, 7-0. Next is ordinance 12-09052023, which is approving the text amendment to the Auburn Code of Ordinances, Section 60-548B, T-4.2B, Section 60-54B, intent and purposes, Section 60-54B-1, building placement on lot frontage buildout 3, Section 548B-2. Point 2, common or porch yard stoop yard frontage storefront type, building envelope articulation, ground and upper story building facade. This is the second reading. May I have a motion?
Sum up.
Second.
Counselor Staples, Counselor Moran on the second. Open this up to the public for comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak?
Can I pass out some papers that?
You can pass them to the clerk.
Okay, great. I'll pass them to the clerk real quick. So what I printed off is the, some definitions from our ordinances, and I see a couple of fundamental flaws from the language here, which I think were overlooked by both staff and legal. One I want to present today is on the definition section of our ordinance. So you'll see the word structure is what I have an issue with. So it says that there are, if it's a shared access drive for two structures, that does not mean dwelling unit. And I think the intention here is if you have two dwelling units at the end of a driveway, as long as it's shared between them, you can violate that front setback and be further than 25 feet from the street. Well, the issue is, structure does not mean dwelling unit. And I printed this off, structure of building means a combination of materials to form a construction that is safe and stable. So it gives examples here, and it says windmills, platforms, observation towers, sheds, cold bin shelters, display signs. So the way this is written right now, you wouldn't have to have two dwelling units at the end of a shared way, but instead you could have a single-family house and a shed. And that would then allow you to violate the maximum 25-foot setback and be out of the public way. So I think that the intention here was a dwelling. So if you look at the other paper, I circled dwelling, that actually is probably what you're trying to get at here. But essentially, the code department would have to follow the ordinance word for word, not the intention. So if I came in for a building permit and I wanted to be 500 feet off the road, as long as I showed that I had two separate structures, which one could be my house, one could be a shed, or a floating deck, or a garage, a detached garage, I could then build that. So again, I just think that was overlooked. And I think something else was overlooked was there's no definition of ordinances for shared access drive. Nothing for shared access, nothing for access, nothing for drive. There's driveway, but it doesn't say driveway. So I think we might be best off creating a definition for shared private drive to seek more clarification on exactly what that is. I know this is getting to the little tidbits and minutia of ordinance making, but I believe that's a pretty big flaw that was overlooked, and I do believe there's more, but that's what I'm going to comment on today. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the public that would like to comment on this order? If not, I'm going to bring back to the council, counsel for any debate. Just as a reminder, second reading, first reading passed, 5-2. I'm sorry, first reading passed. Yes, 5-2. Okay. Any debate? Questions? Clarification? Okay. Ask for a vote at this time.
Counselor Gary?
No.
Counselor Whiting?
No.
Counselor Hawes?
Yes.
Counselor Milks?
Yes.
Counselor Moran?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Staples?
Yes.
Passes 5-2. Next is ordinance 13-09052023, approving the zoning map amendment, T-4.2B and C/OS, Area A1. The second reading, do I have a motion?
Sum up.
Second.
Counselor Staples, second for Counselor Milks. Open this up to the public for comment. Any members of the public would like to speak on this? Please step to the podium, name, address, in three minutes.
No, sir, that's later. That's one of the last agenda items.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the council. Council debate, discussion, none being, ask for a roll call vote.
Counselor Gary?
No.
Counselor Whiting?
No.
Counselor Hawes?
Yes.
Counselor Milks?
Yes.
Counselor Moran?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Staples?
Yes.
Order passes 5-2. Next is ordinance 14-09052023, which is approving the zoning map amendment, T-4.2B and C/OS, Area A2. This is a second reading. Do I have a motion?
Sum up.
Second.
Motion, Counselor Staples, second for Counselor Milks. Open this up to the public for comment. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak? If so, please step up to the podium, give us your name and address, and let me your comments, too. Three minutes.
D Chapman, 40 Vivian Street. I'm sorry, I apologize, I was unaware that we could speak tonight. I got word that we weren't. So I didn't come prepared, so I would just like to reiterate what I've been saying right along, that they didn't get this zoning wrong when they made it years ago with the neighborhood. And I'm not just asking for that parcel to be removed, I'm asking for the whole thing to be removed. And also, I'd like to make a clarification on the, the Sun Journal quoted me in the Sun Journal, and the last part of it was wrong. It was according to the LD 2003 that I said, they said that I said citizens get to choose where this happens. I would never bully anybody in saying anything like that. I said, and I went back and watched the meeting, I said the city, the city council, and the citizens get to decide where the LD 2003 goes. So once again, I would ask you to please not vote, and I'd ask you to remove the whole T-4.2B in this section. And I would welcome all your support on that. Thank you very much.
I'll bring it back to the council this time. Just a reminder, the first vote failed on this motion two weeks ago, 0-7.
I think we had another person that was going to talk.
Oh, I'm sorry. If you guys, just clarification, if you all want to speak, just try to follow up in line behind the podium if you could. That way I won't forget you.
Mike Adler, 82 Loring Avenue, asking you to vote this down again like you have in the past. That is a single-family neighborhood. Like I said at the last open session, we know there are things allowed in the urban residential zone as it stands. We can deal with that as it comes. I offered a suggestion last time, I want to offer one more suggestion, too. All of this rezoning really is unnecessary. You have zoning laws in effect already, and I'll give you just an example. When I lived on Paul Street, we wanted to put a front porch on our house. And at that time, Dave Galbraith was the city planner. And I went to him and asked him if I could do that. "No, you can't do that." And I asked him why. "Because your house is right at the 30-foot setback from the road." "Okay, all fine and good." So instead of doing rezoning, and I know you want to do different things with setbacks on the front porches and houses, why not just inform your code enforcement to allow a variance? We wanted to put a farmer's porch on the front of that house. Would have increased the value of the house, would have enhanced the niceness of the house, would have gotten more taxes for the city in there. But we didn't have, you wouldn't have to change all the zones to do that. You can do variances and let people have their, have what they want to do, whether it be a garage, or whether it be a porch, or whatever it is. There's no need of changing it all around, just for the sake, again, of a developer. And it's too bad that when that house was put on the market, it was put on the market as attention developers. It's too bad, it really is. But that parcel of land should stay in the urban residential zone as it was intended to be right from the get-go. Thank you.
Seeing nobody else for public comment, I'm going to bring this back to the council. Counsel, any discussion? Debate? None being, ask for a vote. Roll call, please, Sue.
Counselor Gary?
No.
Counselor Whiting?
No.
Counselor Hawes?
No.
Counselor Milks?
No.
Counselor Moran?
No.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Staples?
Yes.
Order passes 5-2. Next is ordinance 15-09052023, approving the zoning map amendment, T-4.2B, Area C. This is a second reading, do I have a motion?
Sum up.
Second.
Counselor Staples, got a motion, second from Counselor Moran. Open this up to the public for comment. Any members of the public like to speak on Area C? None being, going to bring it back to the council. Counsel, discussion? Debate? None being, Sue, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Gary?
No.
Counselor Whiting?
No.
Counselor Hawes?
Yes.
Counselor Milks?
Yes.
Counselor Moran?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Staples?
Yes.
Passes 5-2. Next is ordinance 16-09052023, approving the zoning map amendment, T-4.2B, Area D. This is a second reading, do I have a motion?
Sum up.
Counselor Staples, second. Counselor Milks. Open this up to the public for comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak? If so, please step up to the podium, give us your name and address, and let me your comments in three minutes.
Hello, my name's Ryan Smith. I live at 14 Weaver Street. I'm expressing concern from past meetings where it was discussed, both in workshops and in meetings, that this zoning change was going to save these neighborhoods from LD 2003 and the effects of the affordable housing portion of that. My concern is, I submitted public comment via writing that I hope was distributed to you all, that actually says the complete opposite. And the law actually states that if you allow for a multi-unit building in the zoning, you now have to allow for the affordable housing section of LD 2003, whereas under the current zoning, you do not. So I would like to hear some more discussion from the council about why now putting these neighborhoods under the scrutiny of LD 2003 is a good idea, when in the past few meetings it was not. Because all we heard about was the harmful effects, the harmful effects, and we're going to save it. And now that you've been informed that the harmful effects now come into place after you pass this, we now are not discussing that topic. So I would love to hear some more conversation around LD 2003 and why the zoning change would be best for these neighborhoods, seeing how now someone can build affordable housing development in these neighborhoods and only have to have two parking spots for every three units.
I'm sorry, excuse me, sir. I'm sorry, you're out of order.
So I would love to hear your opinions about parking in these neighborhoods, now that you've already passed three and you're about to pass a fourth on where people are going to park, now that developers only have to provide two spots for every three units. So in a three-bedroom housing complex, and there would be two parking spots for every nine bedrooms, or one parking spot for every four and a half bedrooms. Parking is banned in these neighborhoods from November 15 to April 15, and there is no room for off-street parking, so clearly the section's intended for downtown, where there are parking garages and other public street parking. So I submitted that public comment, hoping to gain some understanding and good conversation among council people. But instead, we continue pushing through zoning changes based on uninformed information from past meetings. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the public that would like to speak? No? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council. Counsel, any debate? None? Okay, I'm going to ask Sue, roll call vote, please.
Counselor Gary?
No.
Counselor Whiting?
No.
Counselor Hawes?
Yes.
Counselor Milks?
Yes.
Counselor Moran?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Staples?
Yes.
Passes 5-2. Next is ordinance 17-09052023, this is approving the zoning ordinance text amendments, proposal B1, Amendment Section 60-145 and Section 60-146 of Article 4, District Regulations, Division 2, Agricultural and Resource Protection District. This is a second reading, do I have a motion?
Sum up.
Second.
Counselor Staples, second by Counselor Whiting. Okay, I'll open this up to the public for comment. Any member of the public would like to speak on this? This is some clarification within the agricultural zone. Please step to the podium. None being, I'll bring it back to the council. This passed by about a 6-1 last meeting, as amended. Sue, correct me if I'm, my notes are wrong, but we struck, we struck out point 6, which was the 400 or 20% for lot depth for the placement of a house. Okay, just bring that up. Any conversation, debate, discussion? None? Ask for a vote, all those, excuse me, Sue. Roll call, please.
Counselor Gary?
No.
Counselor Whiting?
Yes.
Counselor Hawes?
Yes.
Counselor Milks?
No.
Counselor Moran?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Staples?
Yes.
Pass, the order passes second reading, 5-2. Next is ordinance 18-09052023, approving the zoning ordinance text amendments. This is proposal B3, Amendment Section 60-145 and Section 60-146 of Articles 4, District Regulations, Division 2, Agriculture and Resource Protection District, Agricultural, AGRP, text amendment, proposal B3, Planning Board Propose Change Number 10, Concerning Prohibiting Housing in the Agricultural Resource Protection Zone in the Taylor Pond watershed. This is a second reading, do I have a motion?
Sum up.
Second.
Counselor Moran, a second for Counselor Hawes. Open this up to the public for comment. I know, it's a lot of convoluted legal talk right there, but basically, there is a motion that says, and I should have explained this a little bit in layman's terms as well, prohibiting anybody from building a house in the agricultural zone within the Taylor Pond watershed. Nobody wants to speak? I'll bring it back to the council. Counsel? Debate? Conversation? None? Second reading? This did fail the first reading. Sue, ask for a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Gary?
No.
Counselor Whiting?
No.
Counselor Hawes?
No.
Counselor Milks?
No.
Counselor Moran?
No.
Counselor Walker?
No.
Counselor Staples?
No.
Next is ordinance 19-09052023, approving the Agricultural Resource Protection text amendment, proposal B2, Planning Board Propose Change Number 10, to Section 60-145, A1B7, prohibiting housing to be sited on land that has been enrolled in certain state-of-man current-use programs within the last five years. This is a second reading, do I have a motion?
Sum up.
Second.
Counselor Staples, and second from Counselor Walker. Open this up to the public for comment. Basically, this would prevent anyone from building a home on land that was previously enrolled in a state tax rebate program for five years. Nobody from the public, I'll bring it back to the council. This did fail last, on the first read as well. Any comment? Debate? None being, I'll ask Sue for a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Gary?
No.
Counselor Whiting?
No.
Counselor Hawes?
No.
Counselor Milks?
No.
No.
Councillor Moran?
No.
Councillor Walker?
No.
Councillor Staples?
No.
Motion fails, seven-zero. Okay, now on to new business. We had one item removed from the consent agenda, and I'm going to bring it back, this is order one-two, hold on. One second. Yes? At this point, I'd like to entertain a motion to, for order one-two-seven dash zero-nine-one-eight-two-zero-two-three, which is authorizing the cancellation of the October second, twenty-twenty-three Regular City Council Meeting and calling a special meeting to be held on October twenty-third of twenty-twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
Some.
Second.
Motion from Councillor Whiting, and a second from Councillor, or excuse me, Councillor Hawes? A second, I'm sorry about that. And Councillor Walker over there. Perfect. Public, anybody in the public like to comment on this? No? I'll bring it back to the council. Council, any comment? I before, I'll just turn it over to the manager here. Manager, can you explain the rationale that you, why you put this on?
Sure, so myself and the Assistant City Manager will be attending a ICMA City Managers Conference on those dates, those are, that conference is something that you have listed as a priority, council, so we will not be here to be able to attend the meeting, so we requested for this meeting to be moved. We would have normally moved it to the ninth, but it's a holiday with Columbus Day, so we're requesting that it be moved to the fall, the week after your third meeting.
Okay. You brought it out, requested I consent, Councillor Staples?
Yeah, I was just looking for a reason. I guess personally, I was not overly excited to have the meeting that week because I'm planning some travel for my team at work, and they're coming to, all over the country, they're coming to Maine that week. But I just was looking to hear that, thank you.
Anything else, Councillor Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too have concerns. I mean, I understand the City Manager and the Assistant City Manager aren't going to be here. I would suggest, against your guys' probably recommendation, to use that time possibly as a workshop to discuss other things that are coming up. We have only got a short term, time left for this term, and we've got a lot of business on our plate. So I would like to make a motion that we use that day for a workshop.
I have a motion on the floor. Yeah. I have a motion, I'm just going to try to paraphrase this because that your motion actually does not affect the order. Okay, still, we have meetings and we have a workshop are separate. So a motion to amend with the addition of a workshop on October second. It would be a straight workshop, no voting would happen that day. Okay, I have a motion to change to add a workshop on October second, twenty-twenty-three. Do I have a second for that, motion to amend?
Would that, would that make it so that we still have the meeting on the twenty-third, but we also have the meeting on the second?
Yes. Do I have a second? Not seeing a second, the motion to amend fails. As in your debate on the original motion? None being asked for a vote, I show of hands. All those in favor of moving our meeting from October second to October twenty-third, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Passes five-two. Okay, next, we're back onto the agenda for new business. First, we have a public hearing on the Public Safety Building, which is scheduled to be submitted to the Auburn voters at the November seventh, twenty-twenty-three election. I'm going to open this up to the public, I'm now going to open the public hearing. If there are any members of the public that would like to speak, please step up to the podium, state your name and address, let me hear comments in three minutes. One of you guys, come on.
Good evening. Matt Daly with the City of Auburn, obviously. I'll decline my address because I live out of town. I'm speaking on behalf of the union as an endorsement for the Public Safety Building as it relates to the needs that we all know we have with this building. There's a lot of operational considerations that we have. One of the main ones that we have is a property room. As we all know, the garage bay out there is inadequate space, and it's to no fault of the city that we've outgrown this place by a mile, so it's, it's time that we move on and have an adequate space. The recent rainfall that we had, that torrential downpours caused a flood in that garage that nearly cost us a boatload of evidence that could have been detrimental to several criminal cases, which impacts victims, some of which live right here in the city. So that's important to them. And as far as space in general goes, it, it's just a draw for, for talking about recruiting purposes. I've seen some of these new police departments have been on trainings, and their new facility is, you can really see when you go in there, the pride that they have in their own home, so to speak. And it helps in recruiting. We've had some staffing issues, we're all aware of that. So recruiting is, it's a big, a big ticket item for us right now. And for us to get a dedicated space for both police and fire would be essential for staffing to help recruiting. Additionally, there's, I mean, there's many issues we can talk about, but to keep it brief, just the, just the sense of pride, having workstations that are appropriate. I don't know the last time members of the council have been downstairs in the police department in the patrol room. It's just, it's just not big enough. And, and we're really hoping that this, this works out and we can get a great space for, for everyone. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Dennis Matthews, I'm the current president for the Patrol Detective Union. I don't want to repeat a bunch of things that Sergeant Daly's.
Your radio on?
I don't want to repeat a bunch of things that Sergeant Daly said, but the need for this space has become overwhelming over the past few years as we grow as a department, as our technology grows, our need for equipment. Myself, my personal workspace is on the third floor.
Can you turn it off?
It's off. And it doubles as a workspace for myself, CID, or actually Evidence Technician, plus a uniform closet, as well as all of our equipment for any type of riot that we may have or we may get called to. So just to emphasize the limit on space that we have. And the only other thing I would touch base on is just the interaction with the public. We love seeing the public in the courtyard, it's great to hear that they appreciate all that we do. But sometimes that interaction is with detainees, could be juveniles, could be adults that are being detained, being questioned. If we have to do any type of interview, we're using the elevator. These people are in handcuffs, and I think it's just uncomfortable. And we don't get that same smile by the citizens when we, we have interaction with them. So again, not to, to repeat a bunch of things, and I just saw this notice tonight for the first time, and I think it outlines it pretty well. Just a sense of being back to a, a single family in a single house rather than being separated, I think will help with recruitment and morale. Thank you.
Yes, I'm not quite sure if this is relevant to the, if I may ask the council a question, ordinance twenty, is that what we're at? Where are we at?
No, sir, at this point, we're having a public hearing concerning a new public safety building.
Oh, safety building. Yes, I would have to agree with the, the union. It would be very wise for the, for the city to invest in more protection for the, for, for the people that are more vulnerable, that are less protected, that are homeless. I think that the solidarity with the, with the pedestrians and the, and the union is there. We need to have more of a, a public safety net. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm Jay Smoan, Chief of Police. And in the workshops and meetings that have led up to adding this referendum for the November ballot, we've discussed squarely the needs of both agencies, and we're going to do a new building. And everybody's pretty much familiar with what those needs and challenges are. I just want to speak a moment to the process that got us here. And we had a Public Safety Building Committee that was made up of staff and citizens to explore all the options that were made available to us. That included a space needs analysis for both departments, location assessments. I've heard some concerns about moving the PD out of the downtown into the Minot Avenue area. What that does do for us is that puts us closer to the center of the city. Because the center of the city lies about three hundred yards from Central Fire Station. So geographically, it's a better response plan for us. And we would have dedicated patrols in the downtown area to make up for moving out of this area. The committee spent a long time talking about building design and building, and designing a building that maximizes all of our operational efficiencies, but also allows us for growth for the future. And one of the things that the committee talked about extensively was building and what the construction type would be. Would that be a renovation plus an addition? We fleshed out all those different types of costs and methods. And at the end of the day, the committee voted unanimously on the proposal that was submitted to you where Central Station be torn down and a new building be constructed. The committee felt that that was the most efficient use of taxpayer dollars for a building that's going to last us sixty to seventy-five years. So to remind the public that the City of Auburn is growing, and the City of Auburn looks very different than when I started twenty-eight years ago. We are growing in both the areas of residential and commercial development. And we need to make sure that we can, we invest in our public safety infrastructure to be able to sustain that growth. As the city grows, the demands for both agencies become more complex and more of an increase in our services, and we need a location to be able to, to support that. So, thank you.
Bob Chase, Fire Chief, Mayor and Council. I'd like to just continue to build on what Chief Moen said. Certainly, I think through the numerous studies all the way back to two thousand and seventeen and through to the report that gave forward this recommendation, there's been a lot of assessment of need, a lot of assessment of options, and a lot of due diligence to get us the recommendation that's going out for referendum. But I think what I'd also like to express is that there is a cost to do, of doing nothing as well. There's both a financial cost and a cost to staff. The proposed structures and the improvement to our public safety facilities are addressing a lot of needs, some operational needs, as you've heard, PD. Both agencies have much more diverse workforces than they have in the past when these stations were constructed. And so that, that's a need that has to be addressed in one mechanism or another. We will be making investments and have to make investments to address that, whether this public safety building gets approved or not. There are health and safety needs associated with both facilities. Those things are going to have to continue to be addressed, along with continued and increased cost of maintenance and inefficiencies in the building. So one of the things that the committee really did do was look at the cost of doing nothing and the fact that over the life of the facilities we're currently in, there are investments that are going to need to be made, and they still won't reach the point that we would like to see for the workplace conditions and safety for our staff that we would like to see. So that's part of the reason we certainly would like everybody to take a really thorough look at this as an option in the referendum. And additionally, you know, why, you know, we'll make it a real point to get out to, to public forums to try to inform everybody as much as we can about the process and how we got here. Thank you.
Hello, everybody, in relation to the current topic, I just want to say that I've dealt with similar issues before at a very much lower level on the, on the, on the food chain, the political food chain, if you will. And I understand that it's difficult for a city to reach out to the state and say, we need money for this, and we need money for that. And it's almost like you're putting yourself in peril. And I understand that. The other thing, the flip side of that is when you, when you make that step, when you move in that direction, it becomes easier for you to get the money you need for the, for the specific things that you need. Because once you get that ball moving in a direction, it's like a snowball going up a hill. Once you get at the top of the hill, it goes down the hill, and it becomes larger and larger from momentum. So when you help somebody else, it's like karma, you know? What goes around comes around. When you do something that doesn't really help you that much, and it actually, you don't want to do it, and it's actually going to cause you headaches, and it's going to help the community, the larger whole, the big picture, then what ends up happening is not only do you help yourself politically, you also help yourself within, more importantly, your families. Because once you take that step politically, it trickles down to the way you live your lives with children and your family and sisters and brothers, mothers and fathers, relationships. It's all about relationships. It's all about connection. So think about that, whether or not you want to make that step, whether or not you want to sacrifice something. Whether or not, more importantly, biggest thing, whether or not you want to face your fears in relation to conflict management and addressing issues to a hierarchy, people a little higher above you on the political food chain. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak in the public hearing about the proposed November seventh question for the Joint Fire and Police Station?
Green Avenue? I, I support the fire and police. I know they need a new building. I've talked to my counselor and told him during budget seasons, if we need to spend money on the city, on the budget, then we need to support our city services. That's everybody in the city. The Public Works, police, the fire, the EMTs, everything. And on top of that, we also have to support the county sheriff. They deserve a new place, too. So the only other thing I would ask, the first time I saw anything about this public, public service building was the last meeting we had here for the zoning. Walked in, you guys were in a workshop, and there was a picture of it right there by the stairway. I hadn't heard anything before that. And there was a little blurb about it in the paper. I would like to know what it's going to cost, that's all. I mean, I do support the police, I do support fire, I do support the county sheriffs. If we have to pay taxes, I want our money going to where it's going to be most usable. Thank you.
If there's no one else who would like to speak, I'm going to close the public session, public hearing this time.
Mr. Mayor, I could just add one thing, thanks.
Okay, yeah, do you want to answer that now?
So I will just add that there are five ward meetings that are being scheduled regarding the Public Safety Building. The first one will be October third at six P M. at Norway Savings Bank Arena for Ward one. Ward two will be October eleventh at six P M. at the Auburn Senior Community Center. Ward three will be October nineteenth at Auburn Hall. Ward four will be October twenty-fourth, six P M. at the Auburn Lewiston Municipal Airport. And Ward five, October twenty-sixth at six P M., that location is still being confirmed. So please take a look at our website. There is a, there is a website for public, for the Public Safety Building project. I encourage people to go there, just trying to get to it. It's auburnpublicsafety.com. And so encourage people to go to that website as well for more information. The project as proposed is up to forty-five million dollars for- The project, as proposed, is up to $45 million for the public safety building.
Up to, as in not to exceed, up to?
That's correct.
Okay. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing, move on on the agenda. Okay, public hearing is now closed. Next, we have ordinance 20-09182023, amending Chapter 24, Article 2, Division 1, Section 24-33 of the General Assistance Ordinance, annual adjustment and maximum benefits. This is a first reading, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Counselor Gary, second?
Second.
Counselor Staples, open this up to the public for comment. If there's anybody in the public that would like to comment, please step up to the podium. Give us your name and address, and let me hear comments, two about three minutes.
All right, general assistance. As a homeless healthcare worker, and I know I'm not like a policeman and fire department person, or fireman, or EMT, or any of that, but I am a CNA, and I take care of elderly folk. I have been doing it for 10 years. And us homeless folk and, you know, and working people need to have, you know, this is general assistance in order to keep us going through economic hardship and inflation and in times where there's no rent control. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else in the public that would like to speak? If not, odds for a vote. All those in, excuse me, discussion, debate. Counsel, any discussion, debate? None being asked for a vote at this time. All those in favor, I believe, show of hands.
Roll call vote?
Is it?
Yep.
I have a show of hands on this one?
Sorry.
First reading, okay, well.
Sorry. Counselor Gary?
Yes.
No.
Counselor Whiting?
Yes.
Counselor Hawes?
Yes.
Counselor Milks?
Yes.
Counselor Moran?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Staples?
Yes.
Passed unanimously. Next is Order 128-09182023, authorizing the partial discontinuance of Chestnut Street. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion for Counsel. Counselor Milks, second. Counselor Moran, open this up to the public for comment. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment on the closing of Chestnut Street? None being, I'll bring it back to the council. Counsel, a debate? Just so everyone knows, Counsel Whiting?
Yeah, I'm fully supportive of the PAL Center. You know, new building, I think it's needed for the neighborhood. However, I have discussed with a number of neighbors and other people who are concerned about traffic movement around that part of town, which has really been a problem that's grown since the Union Street bypass was built many years ago. There are very few ways to get from Turner Street to Hampshire Street. This is one of two. There's Dennison Street and this street. And so while I'm supportive of the PAL Center, I think it's not a good idea to close a street. My preference would be to apply some sort of reduced speed limit, maybe even 15 miles an hour if that's permitted. I know it's permitted in school zones, and this is effectively like a school zone. I'm not sure that that would be legal, but that would be one of the options I'd consider. So those are my comments.
Yeah, good. And just to remind the council, too, this is the second time this has come up in the past four years. Department heads, traffic has been analyzed and so forth. That's why they recommended the closure. The problem, the big problem is space constraints. Chestnut Street has to be closed in order to actually build the PAL Center on top of that footprint. If not, it becomes impossible due to Land and Water Act. We'll lose percentage of recreation land, which will make us in noncompliant fashion. I think I explained that correctly, Mr. Manager, you came in. Did you hear what I said on the discontinu-, why it's necessary to discontinue Chestnut Street?
I'm sorry, I did not hear what you said, but I can give a quick summary.
Please do.
Actually, John's here. I think I would have John probably come up and just talk about the land-water conservation boundary lines and our need to preserve that.
Thank you. So there's a couple, a few things happening here. We have land and water conservation fund land. And there's going to be encroachments on that, so we need to essentially move the building over. But I guess that's one thing, and we're going to have to essentially look at the actual cost of that and doing the analysis of the conservation land swap. The other piece to this, though, is that there really is going to be access management standards. When the plan comes through for approval for Planning Board, there will have to be an access management standards that are addressed and then a traffic analysis. So we're thinking that there's not going to be a lot of big impacts to traffic at this point, so.
Thank you, John. You might want to just hang up fairly tight in case you have any questions. So are there any other questions or debate from the council on this continuation?
Yes, if the street does not become closed, does that change what's going to happen with our building if we want to build a new building now?
Yeah, so if the street becomes closed, it would be significant impacts to land and water conservation fund. So we're going to, they would have to open up additional, you know, basically surveys or an analysis for land swaps and additional costs to the city. And then at the end of the day, there could be additional benefits for providing some of this road closure to extend the land and water conservation fund land for additional programs that the PAL Center would benefit from.
Yeah, and I would just add, and I know Chief Moen can probably come up and speak to this, but the other component, even prior to us discussing the land-water conservation issues and concerns, was just about safety, pedestrian safety movement. We have a lot of green space that are on both sides of the PAL Center. A lot of the students at the PAL use the basketball courts and then also the field behind the PAL Center. And so we have kids that are crossing that road. And there is a safety issue. And Chief Moen, want to just talk about the fact that we have the bypass and what that is?
Certainly. A couple of concerns that Counselor Whiting brought up. One, the speed limit. The speed limit cannot be any lower than 25 miles an hour in a residential area. That's state law. So we wouldn't be able to drop that anymore. It's already 25 through there. And as the manager said, we have a lot of pedestrian traffic in that recreational area, between the fields, the gully, basketball courts, and whatnot. And also, as far as being able to get from Turner Street to Hampshire, to Hampshire Street, Dennison Street is actually better constructed for that and can handle that additional traffic movement there, where Chestnut Street is fully constructed for heavy traffic patterns. So it would be beneficial and more of a safety value to close Chestnut Street and force that traffic onto Dennison. It's really not much of a detour for that area, but Dennison is better constructed to be able to handle that traffic.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions, Counsel Staples?
I guess if I could just add one more piece to that, is that, you know, we will have a traffic engineer looking at this. And we're going to circle back to the ordinance and make sure that either the ordinance is addressed or we're asking waivers for a specific item that will be approved by the city engineer and the city staff having that input as well.
Counsel Staples?
Thank you. Yeah, I had a discussion with Morino Bryan about this particular item on the agenda. I wonder, with the grade, it seems to me that it would be not cost-effective to shift Chestnut Street to allow for the building to be built there. I mean, you've got the gully, but you've got a good grade right there. But has that been looked at at all?
John, I think I would just add, probably the utilities would probably be the biggest issue.
Yeah, that's exactly it. So there's a large 60-inch sewer interceptor pipe that's relatively deep, probably 10 or 15 feet in depth, would be considerable cost. So having that horizontal separation is important there for the structure. So that was one of the limiting factors of moving that back or moving it in a different direction. In addition to that, you know, we did get some comment about the existing land and water conservation fund land that's currently being used as the football field. We were just out there today. It's being used as a soccer field. We don't want to impact those uses as well.
Counsel Whiting?
Yeah, I agree. Dennison Street is much better built to handle traffic. And Chestnut Street has been used as a cut-through, and it can be dangerous because there are kids and people are, you know, speeding through there dangerously. My one issue, though, with Dennison is that it's a poor-performing intersection with Turner Street. When I was on Planning Board, this was 15 or 20 years ago, it was like a F-rated intersection. So there's clearly some, and I know, you know, we're looking at studies of the Minot Avenue corridor. I don't know if it would extend to this transportation studies, but that's a definite area of, you know, a need of improvement.
John, can you, maybe you or Eric, I know Jonathan's not here, but maybe to speak to the Turner-Dennison work that's underway currently?
I, yeah, I'll let Eric talk about that. But I guess just to add to the traffic congestion of the site, you know, there's going to be multiple outlets and inlets essentially coming into the site and away from the site. And I think the way that the site is set up, we'll have parking on both sides, so we're really going to, the hope is to kind of distribute some of that traffic load throughout different parts of the city and really try to alleviate that. We're going to have, we're going to look at that closely in terms of the actual, where some of those push points are that, you know, are critical infrastructure, where there's existing problems right now and how that may either be alleviated through this project or how we got to address it by maybe perhaps taking a different look at turning lanes and things like that from improvements.
Mr. Councils, you want to talk about Turner-Dennison?
Yeah, and we are working on a safety project with the state of Maine for Turner and Dennison that would improve that intersection. I don't know the exact timing, but we can get an update for you on that. And it's, I would just note that this is the first step in at least a three-step process. So this enables staff, a vote in favor of this tonight enables staff to send the notices out. You'll have to hold a public hearing after the notices are sent out. And then you have to wait 10 days after that public hearing to make a final decision to follow the state law process, so. This is not final, and we can get you that information before you make a final decision.
At this time, I'd like to call for a vote. Sue, is this a roll call or a show of hands? Hands, great. All those in favor of discontinuing Chestnut Street, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. All those opposed? Staying?
Staying.
Passes 511. Next is Order 129-09182023, which is authorizing the discontinuance in the realignment of Miller Street. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Staples, second by Counsel Moran. Open this up to the public. Anybody in the public like to speak about Miller Street discontinuation and realignment? No? Bring it back to the council. Counsel, comments, questions? Pretty straightforward. Although at this point, I'm going to ask for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, none. Passes 70. Excuse me. Next is Order 130-09182023, authorizing the city manager to modify the solid waste agreement with Casella to initiate a pilot recycling program within designated areas within the city by using the allocated funding authorized in the fiscal year 2024 budget. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Counsel Staples, second from Counsel Hawes. Open this up to the public for comment. Any members of the public that would like to speak? None being, I'll bring this back to the council. Counsel, debate, conversation? Counsel Gary first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, this pilot project only takes up three wards and not all five?
Let's get, if we could, I'm going to ask the manager to define it because that still has yet to be worked out. So, Mr. Manager, can you give us some of the high end?
So the mayor, in meeting with Casella as well as Counsel Staples, had proposed some type of modification with areas. We're still in the discussion with Casella. We hope to have some more information within the next week or so. The reason why this is designated areas is because I'm just not sure how far those funds will go to be able to provide that service. So we'll continue looking at it. The intent here is to use the money that was allocated. If you recall, you had left that money in the budget to be used towards containers that will be required if we were to stay with Casella in our next contract. And so that means we'll just need to look at funds for that for next year. But this will allow us to be able to use. And this is, I put in the information sheet, this is regarding collection, not disposal. Currently, the containers that are, we added a fourth container, which is helping. I think I might have mentioned that we were going to probably move that inside because it kept, we kept having overflow issues with that fourth container. We're not having that issue. We believe that we, with contamination rates that Casella shared with us, we're probably pretty close to collecting currently the same amount of recyclable materials that we were collecting curbside. And so we're collecting about, I think it was 15%. I think they were collecting about 18% of our solid waste in the past, but there was about a 3% contamination. We have less contamination here. We still have some. There's some that are still throwing things in that shouldn't be in. I think somebody had mentioned it before at the last meeting about, you know, why are these doors so narrow? They're narrow because if you're recycling materials, it should be able to fit in that size. If you make those too large, we're getting materials in that shouldn't be inside those containers. So I know that's a little beyond what we're talking about, but I just wanted to make sure I put that clarifying comment out. So we hope to have something negotiated within the next week. Casella has stated that through that process, the program could stand up November 1st as well as the app that will be used specifically for the City of Auburn on the materials that should be recycled.
So any more, Counsel Staples?
Yeah, thank you. So I'd like to thank the city and the mayor for working on this. I think that, you know, we need to, we really need to take a good look here at recycling and make sure that we're doing the right things. When I met with Casella, I was really encouraged by what I heard from them. I think that they are willing to come to the table with us and work together to make the recycling program in Auburn better. I really have high hopes for this program. I think that the pilot program is a good step in the right direction. It's not the perfect solution, but I'm in hopes that with good partnership from Casella, we can get some good data and get a good understanding of how the recycling program is working here and what we can do to improve it going forward. One thing that I particularly liked about this program is that Casella is committed to partnering with us in educating people in Auburn about how to recycle and what's recyclable. There's an app that they will be rolling out to the people participating in this pilot program that will be very informative and will show you exactly what can and cannot be recycled. And I believe that we can go even further than that with more education. I know that when we saw that article that was in the Sun Journal about this, the picture that was shown was a gentleman dumping electrical cords into the recycling bins, which just goes to show that we need more education about what can and cannot be recycled. So I'm hoping that we can make a really successful program here, and I'm looking forward to seeing how it works.
Counsel Whiting?
Just a question. Has the Sustainability and Natural Resources Committee been asked about this or weighed in on this?
I briefed them, actually. I spent some time with them, till last week and the week before, week before.
September 11th.
Oh, September 11th. So I spent time with them. I explained to them the pilot program concept, answered their questions, but specifically asked them to come up and send the city manager, this is the city manager, list of items, data points that they would like tracked and clarification on program, historical in the control group and in a potential pilot as well. So they're fully engaged. They told me they seemed happy with it, they understood. Gathering information was paramount to making smart, educated decisions based upon results for the next fiscal year. Counsel Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I strongly support recycling and the concept of what we're trying to do. The thing is, if we're doing a pilot program covering three wards every week, wouldn't it be almost the same cost as if we do it all five wards in the same schedule that we are current, well, we were currently doing?
That was a call. That was the concept. That was basically a trade-off, yeah. Yeah, for a pi, aggressive pilot program versus what we were doing, yes. That was kind of the back of the napkin math, if you would, done initially. Now it's up to Casella and the city manager to really have, this order will allow them to work together on that.
In other words, it's still gonna be the three wards every week?
No, I'm not, I'm not stating that. I think that that's the proposal that was, that came from that meeting. It's gonna come down to cost. And so it could look very different. I could come back to you, and it could look very different than what was proposed as a pilot because it's driving of, of workforce. So to do every day was about, you know, trying to take that workforce and be able to make that happen. That might not even be able to occur within Casella's workforce. So that's what we'll, we'll negotiate as we move forward.
What about the cost of the containers and having them come and dump it as well as having a staff person or somebody keeping their eye on what's going on out there?
What was the question, though?
Okay, the cost of having Casella come and dump those receptacles. I mean, there's gotta be a fee for them to do that. They're not just doing it for free.
They are collecting that at no cost.
And then what about staff time to try to semi-monitor it?
So we, we certainly had an issue to begin with. We were putting a, a staff member out that might be on, say, evening shift or something to monitor whether or not there were Auburn residents using it. And we haven't had the need to do that. We will if we see that there's more concerns, but we're redirecting existing staff to monitor that. And some of that might be at an overtime cost, which, which will be, you know, worked within the budget.
So at this time, if there's nothing else, I'd like to actually call for a vote on this. So all those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, none being, pass is seven, zero. Thank you. Next is order twenty-one-dash-zero-nine-one-eight-two-oh-two-three, amending the code of ordinances, Chapter fourteen, Article eighteen. Don't use a medical marijuana business licensing. Public hearing, first reading. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Staples, Counselor Whitey on the second. I'll open this up to the public. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment on this?
Good evening, Mayor Levesque, members of the city council. My name is Hannah King. I'm a partner with Dentons, which is a global law firm with offices in Portland, Maine. I represent ALZI three-hundred-and-thirty, L, C, and Mr. Mark Fishman, who's the hundred percent owner of ALZI. ALZI owns property at two-thirteen Washington Street. I'm here tonight to respectfully request that the council, if they do adopt this proposed ordinance, to remove from it the provision that makes it retroactive to license applications that were not filed or acted on by the city staff prior to July one, 2023. To give some important context, what this amendment would do is it would add to the license application several criteria that aren't in the current ordinance, that you would have to submit proof that you have your local land use approval, all your state licenses, and any other licenses that you're required. It's not that you can currently operate with those if, if you get your local license, but this would just require in order for your license to be determined complete, that you provide proof of that. It also creates a new appeal process that's unique to any other license in, in Auburn. Mr. Fishman has filed an application for a marijuana cultivation facility to be operated at two-thirteen Washington. This property is an industrial warehouse that was previously licensed to operate as a cultivation facility. The application that was filed contained all of the documents that were, are required under the existing ordinance, and that application hasn't worked its way through your process, and there hasn't been a final determination. If the proposed amendment is made retroactive, it would impose on Mr. Fishman and anyone else who filed a license application after July first, 2023, licensing standards that did not exist at the time that they filed their application. So when we filed Mr. Fishman's application on, on July twelfth, we could not have known that the ordinance could be changed and then made retroactive to our application to require us to meet standards that weren't in place at the time that we filed the application. So while I understand that towns can make ordinances retroactive, it's certainly, the question is, should you? And here is the council, the question for you is, does it make sense? Is it fair? Will it create additional liability? Will it have other broader implications for the city of Auburn? And is there another way to accomplish the policy goal? I think the answer to the first question is changing the rules of the game in the middle of the game for people who have filed applications is not fair. Requiring people to have submitted documents that they couldn't have known were going to be required when they file their applications probably doesn't make sense that if a license application that was filed, for example, on July twelfth, is denied because it doesn't meet standards that were put in place in October. As an attorney, I think that you probably are creating an argument that that denial is arbitrary and capricious, so creating liability that didn't exist before. In addition to that, retroactively amending licensing criteria to apply to applicants who couldn't have known is likely to have a chilling impact on businesses willing to invest in the city of Auburn. It's very unpredictable. The thought that a business might have to meet standards that it could not know about at the time that it files its application, that an application could be denied based on those standards is concerning. If the issue here is to ensure that all licenses have required land use and licensing approvals, it seems that it would be simple enough to, to just make it a condition of the license for applications that were filed after July one, but before the licensing ordinance amendments are actually adopted, just make it a condition that they have all the state and local approvals that they need before they're able to operate. So that is, you would issue the license based on the old standards, and this is basically what you did before. So rather than requiring people have all those approval before they apply to, for a license, which will be, that's the forward-looking change, and that makes sense. Most communities do that. But since your policy before was people can apply for a license without providing proof that they meet those standards for folks between July, who file applications between July one and in October, it makes sense not to retroactively apply those standards, but just simply if you issue them a license, if you find they meet those licensing criteria, make that license contingent on them getting all the other local approvals. So while we understand that there, that the need to update the ordinance to make changes to the provisions governing license applications is important, and you have the right to do that, we do request that you not make that retroactive.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Anybody else in the public like to speak at this time?
Thank you, Mayor Levesque, and the members of the city council. My name is Mark Fishman. I'm the sole owner of ALZI three-hundred-and-thirty, located at two-thirteen Washington Street, Auburn. I'm a commercial property owner, and I also am a thirty-three-year licensed real estate broker. I represent a lot of property owners, buyers, and tenants in the city of Auburn. I encourage the council to remove the language from their proposed amendment of the marijuana licensing ordinance, making the changes retroactive to applications filed and acted on by city staff after July one. I did file my application on July twelfth. I prepared the application to complete under the existing ordinance. I included everything that I was required to submit under the existing ordinance. On July seventeenth, I met with representatives from Auburn Fire, Police, and a few other departments from the city staff. We went over some items we needed to address as part of the licensing process to get the approvals. We came up with a plan. And, you know, I thought we're on our way towards getting an approval. If the city makes the amendments retroactive, the council could uphold the denial of the license for not including documents and information in your license application that I, I couldn't have known that I was required to submit. The proposed language not even published until September fifteenth, two months after I filed my application and had the inspection at, at the property. It does not seem like a fair process and can negatively impact not only my business and my property, which I've invested hundreds of thousands of dollars into after I purchased the property, but also I think sets a bad precedent for the city of Auburn. It, it just negatively impacts, you know, our business community, and I, I think it may impact the willingness of future investors and current property owners and business owners to invest in this great city. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
I'll bring this back to the council. There's no other comment. Counsel, Mr. Manager, can you explain? I haven't seen a retroactivity clause in ordinance like this in quite some time. It's definitely not common. Can we explain the rationale behind that?
So I'll have Director Cousins come up and just speak. He was on a call earlier today with legal. This is legal's recommendation regarding this, this ordinance, and Eric can speak to that.
Yeah, this, this language is the language that was recommended by our legal counsel. I did have a chance to talk with Hannah King, who just spoke, and Sally Daggett, our legal counsel, at four today. I think Sally heard the same things that you've heard tonight. I don't know for sure if any of that would change her opinion on the ordinance. We haven't had a chance to follow up since then. But this is the language that she, she had recommended prior to that call. If you want, we can get more details on that prior to a second reading, if that's how you wanted to handle it. But Sally has not responded to the explanation that Hannah gave her this afternoon, but did recommend this language as, as an amendment prior to that call.
Okay. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to table this to a date certain until we can get more information.
I second that.
I got a motion on the floor to table to a date certain. One second. October twenty, I'm playing my calendar, bear with me, I'm sorry. We're looking at October, basically it would be October twenty-third.
Sixteenth?
Sixteenth, I'm sorry, our next meeting. That's right, we changed it. So October sixteenth. I have a motion to, on the floor to table this to a date certain, as of October sixteenth, seconded by Counselor Walker. All those in favor of tabling? Okay. Motion to table October sixteenth. Next, that's the last open session of the night. Members of the public are invited to speak to the council about any issue directly related to city business, which is not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak, please step up to the podium. Give us your name and address, and leave me your comments for three minutes.
No quotations this time, you guys. All right, no worries. Hope you enjoyed some of those anyway. Those, some of those are interesting. So I have two issues I want to mention. One is what I refer to as the, the cone zone. The cone zone, it's kind of funny, it sounds kind of funny. It's not kind of, it's not that funny, it's kind of sad. Back in two thousand nineteen, I guess you broke your all-time record here in Auburn, public, Auburn Public Works, six months down the end of Main Street and Walmart Rotary. Six months, the cone stayed up, and then you find, and then it's all of a sudden time to do something about it. The cones stay up, like a little spot in the road, throw up a cone, safety measures. Makes sense, logical. That's supposed to be a temporary thing. Once it get that, once, once the time period, the duration gets past, say, three weeks to a month, it's no longer temporary. It's almost like a long-term, like, whatever. We're kind of forgetting about it, and maybe we'll get to it. And it has an effect on society, I'm pretty sure it does, and people are less likely to do much about their own stuff when that much consistency is, is happening with something that's so visible. There's a place near Hannaford, almost two months near the prison, about more than two months, the end of Main Street, about two months. Near Rupers, probably more than a month, maybe two months, three months, the cone dissipates, like a big hole in the grass. I don't know, it's just kind of sad. It is really sad, and I'm guessing there's many people who are right on, right on track with me, and believe me, and agree with me on that. The other thing is the driving. And it's a two-part deal, non-stop. And also, people don't even slow down when you cross on the crosswalk. Enough said, it's too much to go into with that. You guys know it's a major problem. And the only way to do something about it is to give people something to do when they're like six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. A community center, like hardcore, like, none of this, let's go through all the, the, let's do this and do that, and we're gonna, we're gonna go through the committees. It's taking so long, why you just do it? Lastly, my email address is w dot Scott two-one-four-three at hotmail dot com. W dot Scott two-one-four-three at hotmail dot com. Scott with two Ts, not the Scottish spelling. And if, and it's interesting, like, if a bunch of people were to show up here, this is the idea, if a bunch of people were to show up, and they would talk, they were to talk about the same issue, like, that would mean five people would be fifteen, sixteen, seventeen minutes, and then you get a double session, and then ten people show up, they talk about one issue. Pretty much the only way it's gonna happen. If you look at a pyramid, real, real quickly, real quickly.
No, sir, I'm sorry, we have to follow the rules. Thank you, I let you go over.
It wasn't even three minutes.
Sir, thank you.
That's, that's right.
Is there anybody else in the public that would like to?
After all, it is your meeting, right? It has nothing to do with the people.
Anybody else that would like to speak at the last open session of the night?
Thank you, Mayor. I am just baffled by all the business community here in Auburn's and this is requesting help from the city where they can't provide proper services and proper funds for employees and, and for the ones that absolutely need the, the assistance. And I think that, given, you know, some sort of austerity here for the city to, to, to do this to the majority who vote, and which happen to be employees, I think that I, that the city can do a lot better in providing a sort of a safety net and be a lot more generous to the majority who vote. And I think that, given the inflation, where businessmen and women can set their prices how they see fit, and a rent control, you know, where landlords can obviously set the rent, you know, pretty much. I mean, not how they see it, but, you know, a two-thousand-dollar rent, rental apartment here in Auburn, it's, it's way too much money for a, for a population that hasn't seen a wage increase in almost half a decade. I think that, well, since the minimum wage has been raised since two thousand nine, I think that, I think it's inappropriate for a city to, to support business operating in adventures of profits and in a, in a way that is going to be against the majority. The, the inflation and, and rent control. Portland has passed a, a board, a rent board. Considering this, this issue and combating this issue, I would give a open discussion and a debate for a, for the council to, to try to come up with some kind of control for tenants and landlords, you know, to be fair in times of economic hardship. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna close the last open session of the night. We'll come back to reports, I'll make it really quick. Two things. First of all, Blues and Brews Festival, very, very successful. Thank you all for going out. I know Counselor Staples was there. I'm sorry I missed you, but I was icing my foot. So, great time, about thirty-five hundred people, no issues. Great bands, great music, great food, great beer, great city. Lastly, on my end, I was invited, if you remember, about a year and a half ago, we had an ad hoc committee, looking at creating pre-approved plans specifically for missing middle. Well, we paused that process because the state was gonna do something. I'm now on the state committee to develop those permit-ready plans for missing middle homes and ADUs at the state level. So I'll take everything we learned and staff provided out to Augusta and hopefully move that forward very, very quickly. I'm also on the committee to help with financing options at state level for ADUs. So hopefully we can get that done in the next couple of months. It's a big holdback for people trying to add a second unit, attached or detached, is secondary lending. So those are my reports. Anybody from the council? Any reports on committees? None being, Mr. Staples?
Yeah, real quick, this Thursday is the annual meeting for the Auburn Public Library, starting at five-thirty down in the basement.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have just a couple items. One, I did go out in the hall and speak with Mike, who was talking about his concern with panhandling. I know we've talked about- I know we've talked about this in the past, but I did share with him that city ordinance, Chapter 112, talks about severability, a severability of parts of our code. If our code has a section that's unconstitutional, then it's something that we cannot enforce. There was a First District ruling regarding panhandling in the city of Portland as it pertained to free speech, and that's no longer something that we can enforce as our ordinance. It still sits in our ordinance. There are other sections within that that still apply, especially regarding aggressive peddling in front of a business. So, there's some sections in there that still apply, but I just want to make sure I made that clarification. I did provide that to Mike. The second item is I did get an inquiry regarding the lawsuit regarding Harmon v. City of Auburn. The judge found in favor of the city of Auburn and American Development Group by affirming the planning board's decision. The plaintiff has 21 days to file an appeal, and the cost of legal fees on that was $6,500 to the city of Auburn. And that was forwarded to you as well as the finding from the judge in your emails this afternoon. You just might not have received it because you were here. So, thanks.
Okay, we have no more executive sessions. Oh, no, no, never mind. We will have, we have finance report in here, but we're going to hold off until next meeting.
We can go ahead and move forward with that. I can answer any questions, or we can get follow-up from Jill.
Okay, I just didn't have that here in mind. Okay. Do we want to go over the finance report for, I'm sorry, this is not in my, for August? Finance report's not in my packet.
Mr. Mayor, I would just state that, as you saw in the report, Jill did indicate a few posting delays or posting that was done in advance. So, that's why there's maybe a discrepancy between percentages of the previous year and this year. Those postings will come in when the report is done for the next month. I can certainly try to answer any questions you have or just provide me any questions and we'll make sure Jill provides it for you.
Any questions? If you want, you can always table this to the next meeting, too, if you want to have Jill here to answer questions or further time review. None? Okay. I'll ask for a vote at this time. All those in favor accepting the August 2023 finance report?
I move in favor of that.
Oh, I never asked for a motion.
Right.
It's the little things that get you, right? I have a motion for Councilor Whiting, second from Councilor Gary. All those in favor? Yeah? Finance report is approved, 7-0. Thank you. Now, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Councilor Staples, second from Councilor Walker. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Okay, we now see an adjourn. Thank you all. Have a great night.